Hi and welcome to the next edition of reclaiming my mind. I'm your host Jessica Vaughn. And again, I am the president of the Democratic Progressive Caucus of Tampa Bay. And today we actually have a school board candidate from Polk County. Joining us today is Kayla Tetter and she is running for Polk County School Board District Three. Welcome Kayla. Thank you for joining us.
Hi and thank you for having me on your show Jessica.
So Kayla, um, tell me, I know you personally and I'm going to go ahead and reference how we met a little bit later. But to start off with, tell me a little bit about yourself and your background.
Well, I just recently graduated from high school in May and I'm about to graduate from Polk State College with my associate's degree after this fall semester.
Wow.
I've been incredibly politically engaged, which I'm, you know, you're aware of in our history. But um, for the past couple of years, I really spent a lot of time, you know, actively engaged in politics, working on, on campaigns. And leading high school Dems as a, as a state organization.
So when you say leading, you were the president, right?
Uh, well, actually we call our leader Chair.
Chair.
So.
So you were elected. So you're familiar with winning elections already?
Uh, that's not the only election I've won. I was also the Chief Financial Officer of Florida YMCA Youth and Government.
Oh, okay. So I think what we're gonna, or what people are probably gonna focus on a lot and what you've probably seen in your candidacy in general. Are people are probably surprised by someone right out of high school being ready to jump into the world of politics. And it sounds like it started early. So you know, what was it in your background or in your family life or in you specifically? That kind of spurred this interest in politics so early?
So my interest in politics really started around 2008 presidential election and I was eight at the time.
Wow.
We were all brought into this gathering hall at our elementary school, all the students. And uh, this was in January after the election. So Obama was about to be inaugurated as president. Uh, it's this huge historic moment. I mean, we've just elected the first African American president in our history. And I was incredibly enthusiastic and very much so looking forward to watching the inauguration. And then I look around at everybody else in the room and they're all dead asleep. And I'm just staring up at the screen and I think to myself, you know what? I want to be there one day.
So it's just something that resonated in you just instantaneously when you were young.
Yep.
So you said you've worked on campaigns. What made you interested specifically in running for the school board?
So over, over my course, uh, in, in our public education system, I've seen a lot of the problems firsthand. And so coming from that perspective, I noticed the lack of student representation. The, the lack of, you know, our, our side, our perspective actually being heard and recognized. And included into how decisions are made. So seeing that distinct lack and, and also being the politically engaged person I am. The two kind of just melded together in, in a really weird, happy way.
And what so far has been the response to when you're talking to people or they find out about this? To the fact that you are so young, what kind of feedback have you gotten?
So when someone doesn't know me, so let's say, take the average person who's never met me at all. They hear an 18 year old that's running for school board. Some of them usually chuckle a little bit like, okay, the kid wants to run this candy store. That's okay, funny, you know? And then things start to change when people hear me actually go, actually talk, actually communicate, answer questions. And then they start to go, huh? Well, maybe she actually kind of knows what she's talking about a little bit. And at that point, they're usually a little more open minded and you know, then we can actually get more support.
So that's interesting because you know, what I feel like, especially when I deal with older people in politics, which seem to be the majority. They're always acting like the, the young, the younger group are what are going to be the saviors of our, our horrible choices. And that we need to, you know, really tap into what the youth want and get them involved in politics and engage young people. And then what I'm hearing is when we have someone who feels super engaged and who's wanting to step up to the plate and who's interested in politics. That the response you've gotten are that people kind of don't take you seriously because of your age. So it sounds almost like there's a little disconnect in what we're being told, you know, people are interested in. And what really happens when kind of younger people get involved. Is, is that kind of what you've been experiencing?
So there's definitely a sort of divide here in that people want young people to get involved in politics.
Right.
A lot because everybody recognizes how valuable it is that we need to be engaged as a society.
Right.
And, and so people love it when young people vote, they talk about elections, they talk about candidates they're supporting. They volunteer on campaigns, you know, maybe even work as paid staff on campaigns. But what I've seen is that people don't often like when a young person runs for office.
Right.
They, they love all of that other stuff and they're more than happy to use us as a volunteer base.
Right.
But beyond that, it's very difficult to get people's support.
That's, that's a shame and that's disappointing. I, I'm not quite sure, you know, why we have that disconnect and I can understand people worry about, you know, just experience. They want to experience candidates, but here you are saying that the fact that you were so recently in the school system and affected by the policies. That, you know, we as parents try to navigate for our children, you understand firsthand. It seems like having that perspective would be essential to having a balanced board.
Well, there've been multiple studies, multiple case studies done that show having a student perspective represented on the board is overall a net positive for the school district. And, and usually when people, you know, decide to go from the experience angle and say they don't have a lot of experience. I like to counter that with, I don't have that particular kind of experience that you're talking about, but I have the student experience. And that's what matters in this instance.
And I think, you know, I've looked through so much of, of, of your platform and different things that you support. That you've really thought a lot of these issues through from, you know, a holistic perspective. So let's talk about kind of what you feel is at the forefront of your platform. And if I was to say, you know, which comes up a lot with candidates, what is the pillars of your platform? What would you say is at the front of your campaign?
So, so our three major issues are countering our top heavy administration slash bureaucracy. Ending our district standardized testing policies that are so harmful to our students. And, and making sure that we have adequate safety measures in place.
Okay. So I know that personally for me, like, um, and I have talked about this a lot of my podcast, even with candidates who aren't necessarily school board candidates. Uh, what I feel is a concern is obviously, especially with the state legislation, the defunding of public schools. And the support of charter schools, which are really privately run publicly funded schools. So tell me a little bit about how you see charter schools and what do you, and how you feel as far as supporting pub, the, the funding of public schools?
Polk is in a really unique position when it comes to charter schools. Because we have the Lake Wales Charter School District.
Oh, okay.
And that's the only charter school district that exists in Florida right now. That's fully run, operated by them. They're their own contained entity.
They have their own, oh, that's very interesting. I didn't even know about that. So it's within the Polk County.
It's within Polk County.
They have sub-districted a special division just for charter schools.
No, just Lake Wales.
Oh, so that's the city or is that a county?
It's the city.
City, okay.
Yeah. So Lake Wales is a city in Polk County. It's kind of towards the, the bottom half of the county. And they've split off and formed their own separate charter district entirely.
So is every school in Lake City or Lake Wales a charter school?
I believe so. It's all but two.
Wow. So they're almost like a testing ground, you'd say?
Kind of. It's, it's, yeah. It's a really interesting community that they've created. And the reason they ultimately decided to do that was because they weren't getting the support that they needed from the Polk County School District. They weren't getting the resources. They weren't getting, you know, the proper funding and they weren't having their voices heard. So ultimately in order to take back the local control that they wanted, they split off and formed a charter school district.
Interesting. And what do you think has been the outcome of that so far? And how's that affected your personal stance on charter schools?
Well, the interesting thing about Lake Wales is they accept, you know, most of the students. There, a lot of their schools have made the commitment to accept all of the neighborhood children and to their schools. So it's not like with other charter schools where you're getting that pick and choose resegregation dynamic. That's not really happening in Lake Wales because they've made a commitment to make sure that doesn't happen. So the way I see it, Lake Wales has been able to have a lot of success. They've been able to have a little bit more freedom with what they do with their students. And incorporate more, you know, local community involvement and effort by having that more local control. So with Lake Wales, I view Lake Wales differently than I do just about any other charter school or any other charter system. Because of the, the gains that they've made, because of the commitments that they've made and because of our relationship with them. And by our, I mean the Polk County School District and them. I usually divide charter schools into three categories. That's for profit, everything else and Lake Wales. So we just talked about Lake Wales, but moving on to everything else. So the, just the general charters throughout Polk County. My, my main issue with charters is their ability to create that resegregation dynamic. And we saw that problem happen within Polk County just a few years back when they ruled that our schools were segregated. And we had to do some really weird things with our zoning because of it. And, and so from that aspect, there are a lot of things to improve when it comes to charter schools. If we want to still keep charter schools as a model. And charter schools originally came about as, as a way for the, for new ideas to be tested. And then implemented into the public school system. If we're keeping that as the premise and if you're making a commitment to accept all students, regardless of their socioeconomic background, test scores. And if you're, you're actually going to take those ideas that succeed and implement them in the public school system. Then there's not really a lot of issues with charter schools.
If you're, as long as you're not for profit as well.
Right. And that's, that's the third category for profit. I am a hundred percent, 110% against for-profit charters wholly.
Right. So I think what muddies it and makes it challenging is that any charter school takes funding away from public schools. And that I think people, even if they're a good idea for think tanks, and I, I support them as think tanks. Because I think that there's a lot of, um, non-typical learners or atypical learners that aren't a good fit for our school system and get lost.
Fill a specific niche, then they can be incredibly valuable.
But I, I worry that, that it's sold that way so many times. And really it's, there's ulterior motives and the problem is that it's completely bankrupting and taking the money away from public schools. When, you know, if we're not having success in our public schools, whether it's based on the fact that we're not catering and diversifying the curriculum for all students. Or that they're not getting the support, instead of creating a subcategory, I just wish that people could fight and make public schools as successful. So that's always kind of my hangup.
A lot of what my platform is, is about is making sure that we have the freedom necessary to implement new learning strategies. New educational strategies into, you know, our, our school system.
Yeah, I noticed that because I was looking over again, some of the stuff that you had on your platform. And there was, there was a lot of addressed as far as, um, sort of atypical learners and disabled students. And I had a candidate on yesterday that had a disabled student and she had a different feeling towards charter schools. Because that was the only way that she could find the help that she needed, um, with her students. So tell me a little bit about, you said that's kind of at the front of your platform and what you're advocating for, what that means for our listeners.
So my campaign motto has been since the beginning, students first. And, and to me that means countering our top heavy administration, reducing standardized testing and prioritizing student safety. But it also means that we need to be treating our students as the individuals that they are. And making sure that they have access to the education that they deserve. If that means, you know, we have a charter school specifically for students with disabilities to meet their needs. Then awesome, we should make sure that they have access to that. And, and it also means that, that we need to be providing more resources to our, our ESE students. To our, our English spoken language speaking students. Uh, making sure that we are actually giving our students the, the various paths that they deserve and the choices that they deserve.
So tell me a little bit about what, cause I'm very familiar with Hillsborough County and our, and our budget concerns and what we've prioritized. We have a very unhealthy budget, um, and some severe problems with financing. What would you say that for the Polk County, what kind of priorities have they had within their budget? And what does the budget really look like and been allocated towards?
So with the budget, there are some distinct problems. First of all, we haven't actually really prioritized teacher salary and actually, you know, looking at prioritizing step increases. Before we get to the very end of the budgeting process. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Um, another issue is we don't put all of our contracts out for bid all the time. And if we were to do that, we can actually see the price of our contracts dramatically decrease.
So why do you think they don't go out for bid?
Well, part of it is they put, uh, an evergreen clause in the contracts of some, in some of their contracts.
Why would they do that?
Uh, well, that was a decision made by the school board years ago, quite honestly. And I'm not entirely sure why that decision was made. I'm sure it was made for a reason, obviously. But it's something that I believe should be heavily reevaluated, especially given the financial struggles. And the financial hand we've been dealt by the state.
Now, do you have schools similar to where we do where air conditionings are broken? Or there's not enough toilet paper to go around? Or do you find that in general, the school's basic needs are, are somewhat addressed?
Those needs are usually somewhat addressed, quite honestly. I mean, it's not like in Broward County where we, where they have schools covered in mold. Or, or in Hillsborough where they apparently have air conditioners broken all the time. Our students' basic needs like, like air conditioning and toilet paper are pretty much set.
Except that's nice.
When it might break.
Lucky you. Okay. So tell me a little bit about, are you running against an incumbent?
I am not. This is an open seat.
Okay. And how many other people are in the race?
So I'm in the fund race in our county.
Of course, when there's never, when there's an open seat, it's always a fundraiser.
Always a fundraiser. Uh, so we've got four people, myself included.
Actually, that's not bad for a non-contested seat.
There were five, but one, uh, did not make it past qualifying.
Oh, okay. Um, okay. So, and then what, uh, so that comes up on August 28th. You'll, because it's a nonpartisan seat. And then do you guys, I'm assuming you have a runoff if, if no one gets over 50%? Okay. So, um, you have four other people in the race. What do you, what would you say based on what you've seen from the other candidates? Distinguishes you or separates you from some of the other platforms of the other people running in the other race? I mean, running in the same race.
I'm the only one with the recent student perspective. I'm the only one in the race that's been in school in the last 18 plus years. So I mean, think about it that way.
Right.
I, I've been there to see the, the changes that technology has had on our educational process. And, and how we can be putting in more, you know, fresh ideas, fresh perspectives into our schools.
And so it sounds like in Polk County specifically, after the, the last shooting in Parkland. That, um, with the kind of discussion of the Marshall program that you guys, from some of the answers I've seen, have kind of adopted. Something specific to Polk County. Um, so I'm not familiar with that. Um, tell me a little bit about that. And I know you said part of your platform is securing your schools. So if that ties in and what, and what that looks like.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll start by kind of explaining what the, the Polk County School Board decided to do ultimately. And then go into, you know, how that ties into my platform and what I'd like to see happen in our schools. So with, with the school Marshall program, what Polk County has decided to do is hire outside guardians to watch over specifically our elementary schools.
Okay.
Okay. And, and so what that basically looks like is a person who decides to apply for the job. Might be a parent, might just be an engaged community member, mighty, you know?
Okay.
Might be a former teacher, who knows, but, but decides to go after this job. They have to go through so many hours of training, um, at which point, I've heard that the training has been so rigorous before. That, uh, halfway through one of the lessons, somebody just stood up and walked out. So, so there is a lot of training that goes into this. It's.
How is this being funded?
Um, so, so partially by, by the state mandate, partially from the school board.
So they've made a real priority of it. They're taking it seriously.
Yes, exactly. And so, so with that said, I believe they're hiring about 90 guardians total. I could be wrong. Don't quote me on that.
I won't.
But they, they have to go through incredibly rigorous training. And then they're specifically going to be servicing our, our elementary schools, which don't have school resource officers currently. So with high schools and, and I believe most of our middle schools, we have school resource officers to cover those campuses. With our elementary schools, in the past we have not. So this is kind of to, to supplement that, if that makes sense. Um, and so each of these guardians is going to be paid about 30,000 a year, I believe. Yeah, 30,000 and, uh, will be stationed at the elementary schools. This is specifically unique to Polk County because we're not deciding to arm any existing personnel or anything like that. We're bringing in entirely outside people and putting them through an incredibly rigorous training. As far as what I would like to see happen in our schools. I believe that we need more peer-to-peer counseling groups because the first step to safety is always prevention. And if we can provide our students with the mental health support that they need. Then ultimately we're going to be preventing these incidents from happening to begin with.
Right.
Uh, we also need to actually do something. Um, and, and by that, I mean, in Polk County, we've got this see something, say something program. I don't know if that's across the board in all counties.
It sounds familiar, but.
But basically it's if you see something, say something. If you see a kid who looks like he's, you know, gonna do something bad or you have concerns for whatever reason, say something. But the problem that happened in Parkland was nobody did anything. Plenty of people said something, but nobody did anything. So the way I see these peer-to-peer counseling groups and other sort of support systems like that is it's a way for us to communicate. It's a way for peers to work out their problems in a moderated setting. And if any, you know, conflicts do come up, if any problems do come up, if there are any red flags, then there's somebody there. And you don't have to rely on any sort of reporting system. So, so that can help catch a lot of things that have fallen through the cracks. We also need to better fund mental health support in, in our county for our schools. Because well, people in the past have said, well, aren't guidance counselors supposed to do that? We're currently using our guidance counselors as testing administrators. So I don't really think they have the time to do both. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And I think it's a bigger job than one person.
It is. It is ultimately, you know? So what I'd like to see happen is maybe implement some kind of strategy like Osceola County did. And get more mental health personnel in our schools as well. So I'm not very good at explaining it whatsoever, but Osceola has found.
You're doing a good job.
Osceola has found, uh, a unique way to fund their mental health support in their county. And I was at a school safety forum where somebody from Osceola County spoke and talked a bit about their system. It's something that I'm very interested in seeing how we could implement that in Polk and what that might look like. Because they, if they were able to save money on mental health and actually give their students the support they need within their budgetary constraints. And that's something Polk can emulate, then why not?
Absolutely. Um, and it's just nice and refreshing to see somebody using, looking at other counties. To see the good things in those to use as a model, um, to take into your county. So one of the things I was kind of reading about was when you were specifically talking about this outside personnel. As opposed to being more of a resource officer or someone with the ability to arrest students. That you think it will help, um, with the school to prison pipeline. Tell me a little bit more about that as well.
So they don't really, the, the new guardians, they don't have the power to arrest or anything like that. They have very specific, you know, job descriptions. And those job descriptions don't include arresting students on campus.
Right.
So if we implement more guardians instead of school resource officers and maybe see, you know, how that looks. You know, as a dynamic in our schools, then maybe that's a way in which we can help end the school to prison pipeline.
One of the other things I noticed that you were talking about, um, when we were kind of talking, one of the questions was vocational education. Was that you had talked about the clear division between the white collar and the blue collar academies. Um, and I like to see that that's in somebody's vernacular in general. So tell me a little bit more about what, what your thoughts on that are.
Okay. This is something I'm going to talk for a while about. This is, our, our Polk County school system has an incredibly robust career and technical education program. We've got multiple academies. We've got Travis Technical Career Center. We've got, you know, a bunch of different career opportunities for our students, should they want to take advantage of them, which is awesome. But the problem is we see a little bit of a divide between the, I don't like these terms, but quote unquote, white collar and blue collar.
Sure.
Um, uh, you know, academies. So the clearest divide that I can think of within Polk County, to give you an example of what I mean when I say this. Is the difference between George Jenkins High School, which is where I graduated from, and Tennerock High School. George Jenkins High School has an academy of, uh, legal studies. It has a medical academy. It's got an engineering slash drafting academy. It's got, um, a digital design academy. It has just about any, anything that you could ever dream of. It's got an agricultural academy, which are pretty ubiquitous across the county. But when you look at Tennerock, what does Tennerock have? Tennerock has a construction academy. Tennerock has, uh, Lakeland Electric Power Academy. Tennerock has a digital design academy and that's it. George Jenkins has a bajillion options that, you know, as, as someone new to the school, I was having struggles. You know, figuring out what I wanted.
Right.
And at Tennerock, it's, well, you have three choices. So there's, there's a divide between the number of choices you get. There's, there's a divide between the types of careers offered. And, and overall, it's just, if a student that's at Tennerock wants to say go into law. They don't have access to a legal academy unless they have transportation to another school that offers it. So I wasn't ever zoned for George Jenkins High School. I only ever attended it because of the academy of legal studies, which I was able to do because my school that I was zoned for never offered it. But if I didn't have access to reliable transportation. There's no way that I could have become an accredited legal professional. And that's something that's going to allow me to get a leg up on everybody else when it comes to applying for jobs, getting a better salary right out of high school. Supporting myself, paying for college. And those are the types of opportunities that because of this weird sort of white collar, blue collar, job academy segregation we have going on. That some students won't have access to.
Sure. So you're addressing classism.
Basically.
So you do see, you do see that that's a problem already starting. And do you even see that there is a problem or an issue with classism starting at elementary schools as well?
Hmm, to a, to a degree. And that mostly comes into play with, again, the charter schools. Because we see a clear divide socio-economically. And that happens mostly because of test scores, to be quite honest. So there's, there's a really interesting dynamic between our, our testing culture and the creation of these charter schools. The, the growth has kind of paralleled in, in a lot of ways. Does that, do you know what I'm talking about?
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah. So with our, with our elementary schools, we don't see it so much on the career and job level like you do in middle schools. And especially high schools. But with elementary schools, you do see the divide happening in what schools people go to. You know, so if, you know, I, i- if a student is in a socioeconomic, in a lower socioeconomic area. They're more likely to achieve lower test scores. Which means that they're less likely to ultimately attend a charter school. Because charter school is probably not going to accept them or, or ensure that they're, you know, removed before testing time. So with that said, you see that sort of resegregation and that plays into the classism too, at, at the elementary school level.
How do you feel like when you talk about these concepts, the people in your district respond?
People generally respond with either, with the academies, wow, I didn't know that was happening. Or, uh, wow, what can we do about it now?
So you feel like once they're educated.
Once people are educated that these issues are actually issues, they're usually incredibly responsive to addressing and fixing them. But the problem is actually disseminating the information.
So you feel like if you were, when you're elected, part of, part of your job would be educating people.
Absolutely.
What do you think would be some other, um, facets of us being a school board member in Polk County?
I'm so glad you asked. So, so as, as a school board member, obviously a lot of what they do is, uh, choose a superintendent, approve a budget, et cetera. But I want to go farther than that. I don't want to just fulfill my job requirements. I want to go above and beyond. So I want to be able to give students a real voice. I want to make sure that we're implementing a student representative on the board. So even after I'm. So even after I'm gone, we're still having that legacy of student representation. I want to personally work on lobbying the state legislature because it's something I'm incredibly passionate about. It's something that I've worked on in high school Dems before as the state chairwoman. And it's something that I'm incredibly confident that if we're actually representing the student perspective and we can get that across to legislators, that we'll actually see some changes happen.
Hmm, I love that. I love that passion. Um, I mean, a- as I mentioned when we had talked about it, you know, I'd first met you when you were chair of the the, this the high school Democrats. And I didn't honestly even know that we had an organization was that, that was that strong.
I promise.
Um, and was just blown away by your dedication to politics, you know, and now hearing, you know, how much you've, you know, you've educated yourself and how passionate you are about the issues and how well spoken you are. Um, you know, it's just, it's so inspiring to see, you know, um, someone right out of high school more well-spoken and educated on the issues and thoughtful and connected than so many other, you know, candidates that I speak to that have had years of experience. Um, so I, you know, I definitely want to commend you and applaud you on that. Um, so again, looking over at your platform, kind of what I've seen in a lot of the answers to some of the questions I've seen, like there was one where it talked about, do you support state preemptive um, preempt, preemption of local government decisions? And I thought that your answer was interesting. Do you remember what you wrote?
Yes, I do, actually. So that, the the question was how how I feel about the state preemption of local decisions.
Right.
And my response was, I'm very much so for local control, except when it comes to issues mostly pertaining to civil rights. So let's say that a a school district decided to implement um, uh, an incredibly homophobic policy. That's an instance in which I'd be incredibly supportive of state preemption.
Yeah, and I love that you brought up civil rights because I think that one thing that I noticed throughout the answers of different questions that I I saw that you answered was a dedication to equality for everyone and every student. Um, and I think that's important and differentiating that in our candidates. Um, because I think some people say that, you know, um, to get elected. But what I've seen over and over again is your answers is a commitment to that, um, you know, and in every way, making sure that you're advocating for for equality for all students. And personally, for me, I think that's one of the most important things that I look for when I'm choosing um, who I'm gonna vote for on the school board, um, as well as an understanding of how it works holistically and and balancing a budget. Which I know that there are so many PTA moms that go out and love them. I get so much pushback because I have so many passionate PTA moms that um, are great advocates and additions to the school board, but you know, they don't always understand how much of the position is managing a budget. And it sounds like you do, even at your tender age, have experience with that. So tell me a little, I know you mentioned it brief- briefly. Tell me a little bit about that.
Yeah, well, I I was the state chairwoman of Florida High School Democrats.
Right.
I was also the chief financial officer of Florida YMCA Youth and Government until I actually resigned in in January to run for this office. And I was also the treasurer of the local Florida Law Honor Society.
Wow.
So I'm, I am no stranger to managing a budget, obviously never, you know, one billion. I mean, I wish, but I don't think any candidate can claim that they've had experience with a one billion dollar budget, at least not in this race.
Right, right, yeah. A billion, gosh. Um, all right, well, I think that you've answered so many of my questions and that you've really encapsulated, you know, what you're passionate about and what's at the forefront.
One more thing that I want to talk about. I really want to talk with you about teacher retention and recruitment. It's something that I've been incredibly passionate about and and it's something that honestly needs to be spoken about within, you know, not just Polk County, but also Florida as a whole. Because we've got some really bad teacher retention rates.
Right.
Especially among our post-secondary science teachers, believe it or not. They have the lowest retention rate of of any of the subgroups.
And when you say we, do you mean again the state or are you talking about specifically Polk at this point?
Um, I I know specifically Polk. I don't know if that's true on the state level, but I'd be willing to bet if they're not the top, they're among the top in the terms of of teacher retention. Um, so with teacher retention, we have to address all of the different facets of it. Uh, so that includes both the external and internal stressors. Those include salary, bureaucracy, student discipline, and our testing system.
Yes.
So with with teacher retention, so many people place such an emphasis on salary that I'm almost worried that we're not going to actually tackle the other issues and other aspects of it. So when I place a he- a heavy emphasis on talking about the other aspects, it isn't because I don't value prioritizing our our teachers' salary, but it's because everyone talks about that. So the other aspects, student discipline, bureaucracy, testing. Um, and there are, there are other facets, but those are the top ones. With student discipline, we need to be giving our teachers more support. With the system that we have in place, with the problems that we have, given our low teacher retention rates, so many of our newer teachers didn't go to school to become an an education major. They didn't decide they wanted to be a teacher ultimately. They got a PhD in biology and stumbled into education. They've never stepped foot in a classroom. They don't know how to manage student discipline. And I've watched too many of my own teachers that were first or second-year teachers be entirely run over by the classroom which they are managing. And it's something that I believe that the district should be providing more training on. Especially since we're recruiting so many non-education special, you know, people.
Right.
Um, we also, there's, there's two parts of discipline, of student discipline. It's first what happens in the moment, then the follow-up. So with the moment, we need to be giving them more support and training so that they can actually handle it and get their class back on track. But with the follow-up, we need to be giving them way more support than we do because we can't just have the teacher send the student to the choice room and then send them back. That doesn't solve anything ultimately. It's just a back and forth that's draining everybody's time and energy. And when it comes to actually, you know, following up with the discipline and talking to parents even, we need to be sure to back the the parents up or the teachers up, sorry, when it comes to communicating with the parents. And that's something that not every school has done uh, an incredibly great job at and that we need to improve honestly across the board. But that's, that's not it when it comes to our teacher retention problems. It's not just student discipline. It's also our bureaucracy. We're giving our teachers so much paperwork.
Absolutely.
Taking so much of their planning time away. And all of that affects the the environment, that affects their ability to manage the classroom, that affects their ability to dedicate the time towards their students that they should, and that ultimately affects teacher morale. Because if they're not being able to spend time doing lesson plans, actually one-on-one communicating with students, what they actually are passionate about, then they're less likely to want to stay in the profession. When we, when we drain the fun things away from teaching, it's no wonder that we don't have people who want to be teachers anymore.
Yeah.
Because we're, it's, it's incredibly unfortunate, but we're basically taking their passion and perverting it. And that's not something that I want to see continue to happen in Polk County. Uh, with with testing, it's the same thing. We're taking their passion and entirely perverting it. And that's a major issue because if our teachers are spending all of their time administering tests, making sure their students are taking tests, et cetera, et cetera, they're not spending any time actually teaching. And that's what they love to do. That's why they're there. Or at least I hope it is. And then there's also, there's also teacher recruitment. If we, if we do basically all of what I just talked about, we've cut our recruitment problem in half. That's, that's it. Half of our recruitment problem is gone.
So what I think is an issue, um, as a certified teacher, um, and somebody who's worked in the classrooms, is I think that this is done by design. I think that the state legislation um, in their charter school push in the last session where they allocated so much money towards charter schools, also made sure there was a clause in there that teachers uh, for charter schools didn't have to have a college degree. Because as they privatize education, one of the ways that they're gonna make more money is by being able to pay teachers less. So I think that there's a design in the curriculum, in the standards, in the settings to overwhelm teachers with work so that qualified teachers quit and they can start to bring in lower-paid teachers that don't have higher, is higher requirements to fill these charter schools. So I'm glad someone's talking about it and identifying it because I know as a teacher, as someone who works in many different schools where I listen in the lunchrooms to teachers' complaints, it absolutely, pay is important. Um, but on top of it, yes, feeling valued, having a manageable workload, uh, being able to do what they're passionate about, having some freedom, autonomy, having respect in what they do, is all a huge piece. So I think that that, the fact that you're talking about these issues on top of pay is hitting the nail right on the head. Um, and I'm glad that you brought that up.
And I want to go back a little bit to something that you said before about how a lot of my platform talks about equality for all students. But it's not just equality for all students. It also includes our staff, our teachers, our our support systems, our administration too. Um, and and in talking about teacher retention, that kind of ties in. I was asked a question a a couple of days ago, and it was, how can we actually recruit more minority teachers? Especially more African-American males. And so, you know, I have an answer to that, but I also started to research more, look up some case studies, et cetera, get some more opinions on it. And something that I found was interesting was if a student has uh, an African-American or minority teacher between third and fifth grade, regardless of what race they are, they're more likely to do better. And and it's, and that's especially true when it comes to our minority students. Uh, and something that I find really interesting when we talk about why we don't have more minority teachers is there's something that a lot of people aren't talking about. We have to talk about the heart of why we don't to begin with. It's really difficult to convince our minority students that they would make great teachers when there are no minority teachers.
Right.
And and so this is also doing a disservice to our students because like I said, if if they have those teachers between third and fifth grade, they're more likely to do better and actually succeed. But what can we do about this ultimately? Part of, part of recruitment can be accomplished by addressing a lot of the things that I mentioned before. But what I'd also like to see happen is the expansion of our future educators academies within our schools. Um, Bartow High School and one other high school, Lake Gibson High School, both have future educators academies. So basically, if you want to become a teacher, a para, a substitute, anything, you should probably go to those academies.
Right.
Um, and he, and students can leave Bartow High School with their para certification.
Wow.
So it it strikes me as incredibly odd that a county with a teacher shortage doesn't have more robust teacher education programs so that we can recruit from right here.
Yeah, so you want to see more diversity.
Obviously, yes. I'd love to see more diversity.
You're begging for more diversity.
If if we're actually recruiting from our our local hometown population because we have those programs in place, then we're more likely to see a a staff that's representative of the diversity of our county.
Mm-hmm. I like that. To- talking about holistically, addressing all of the issues. Um, especially when it comes to type diversity. That's not enough, I feel like, school board candidates' vernaculars. Um, how about when we're talking about these issues, um, and we're talking about the um, issues that teachers are facing? What does the union look like there? And how do you feel as far as teachers' union and supporting workers' rights and collective bargaining in general?
I am absolutely supportive of our union. I'm absolutely supportive of collective bargaining. It's something that we should be putting more of an effort towards uh, being, you know, more reciprocal on the side of the school board, actually entering into those conversations and and having productive conversations to begin with.
So do you, I'm assuming like here, when when we're talking about teacher pay, the school board negotiates with the unions.
Correct. There's, there's an entire salary negotiation process.
Um, would you ever, if it came down to, and there was um, a push to change our state constitution and allow teachers, as part of collective bargaining, the right to strike? Is that something you'd be supportive of?
Yes.
Okay. Um, well, again, I'm glad that you touched on something that um, we hadn't spoken on, but I feel like, you know, I've gotten a good feel for you. Is there anything else that you wanted to add about your campaign or that we haven't talked about that you wanted to share with our listeners?
Um, no, I think that pretty much covers it.
Yeah, I feel like it's covered.
But but uh, if you'd like to learn more information about my campaign, you can always visit the website. It's www.kayla tetter.com. That's K-A-L-A-T-E-D-D-E-R dot com.
And I'm assuming ballots are out. You're already, people are already doing early voting.
Yep. Well, not early voting, but vote by mail.
Vote by mail. Um, and so if that's your website, what if people are unbelievably inspired and want to help um, in your campaign? Are you doing phone banks? Are you doing canvassing? What are you looking for as far as volunteers?
We need everything from from sitting there at night watching Netflix and stuffing envelopes to phone banking, to canvassing. We need help with everything. We we need people that would be willing to, you know, work a booth in an event. People to just attend events and wear our shirts. If you want to help in any way, there are so many ways that we can get you connected and involved.
Is there an email? Do you have a Facebook account?
Yep, so you can find me on Facebook. It's Kayla Tetter. Uh, my email is also kaylatetter@gmail.com. And again, the website is kaylatetter.com.
All right. Yeah, I like that consistency. Well, again, thank you so much. Um, it's been a pleasure as always. Um, again, I'm so just blown away by your knowledge and passion and how much you have already reflected on the issues that I don't, like I said, see grown people who have been involved in education for years looking at. Um, I wish you the best of luck. Um, again, I thank you. Um, thank you for listening. I hope you enjoyed this episode. Uh, again, if you ever have any feedback or questions to ask our guests, you can reach me at J. Vaughn, V as in Victor, A-U-G-H-N, thirty, J. Vaughn thirty at gmail dot com. Find us on Facebook, Reclaiming My Mind. Like our podcast so you know when new ones are coming out. Um, and thank you for listening. Have a great day or evening.